Mayor Hewitt has tested positive for the virus and will not be with us for the meeting tonight, and he's asked our clerk treasurer, Susan, and I to manage the meeting this evening. That being said, our city council meeting for January 4, 2021 is officially called to order. The Reverend Brett Wedding has kindly considered to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to be followed by the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for your goodness and your mercy to us. Lord, we come before you tonight, and we ask you to bless this community. We ask you to bless our mayor and his wife as they are battling COVID. We pray that you would strengthen them and heal their bodies and give them a speedy recovery. We pray for all of our citizens in Peru and Miami County that are sick and battling this virus. We pray, God, that you would strengthen them and heal them. And, Lord, in the last several months, we've seen several of our own community people pass away. And we pray for your comfort and your strength for these families. And we pray for your blessing upon our community, our healthcare workers that are battling this virus on the front lines. Those that are going through this, Lord, we pray that you would give them strength, comfort them, and bless them. Bless this meeting tonight. Bless this city council meeting. We pray that you would put your favor and your blessings upon this city, our schools, our economy, and we give you praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Yes, yes.
Thanks, Brett.
Loud and clear.
Perfect.
Is Brett on the prayer yet?
No, I don't hear Brett's voice. Brett, are you out there?
He has already said the prayer. You guys talked over him.
Are you saying, citizen? We didn't hear it. None of us talked at all.
We couldn't hear.
Of course, we did not talk over him.
No, I heard Betsy leading the pledgeable agents.
Okay.
Thanks, Brett.
This is Tom. At present time, Susan, when you do the roll call for attendance.
Anderson.
Here.
Gustan.
Here.
Clotho.
Here.
Ramsey.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Reading and correcting of the Journal of the Minutes of Regular Meeting on December 7th, 2020. We all had copies of that. I move that we accept the minutes of the meeting on December 7th, 2020.
Pat was second.
Please state your name when you say second.
I was Pat. She said Pat, second.
Do you want me to say Russell?
No, when you make a motion or second, please state your name for me, please.
I did. But do you want me to do Russell instead of Pat?
You're fine.
All right.
Just be you.
Well, Pat, that could be confused with Pete. Pat, maybe you should move last name.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call.
Okay. Anderson.
Yes.
Gustan.
Yes.
Clotho.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Here, yep.
Russell.
Yes.
Sayhadashini.
Yes.
And Wolf.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. At the present time, we're going to be electing officers. Nominations for chairman are now open.
I'd like to nominate Betsy for chairman and Pat for vice chairman.
We'll do one at a time, please.
Okay. I nominate Betsy Wolf for chairman. This is Kathleen.
Kathleen.
Steve seconded it.
Nominate Betsy.
Do we have any nominations?
Uh, Sayhadashini, I nominate Tom.
Steve.
Mark seconds.
Okay.
Do we have any other nominations?
Tom, Mark second.
Are there any other nominations? This is Tom. Do we have a move to close the nominations?
I don't have to close. This is Kathleen.
Second.
Pete was second to close. Okay. I believe the best way to do this is to do the roll call, and each person can vote who they want. Okay?
Okay, we'll do Betsy first. Go. Anderson.
Wolf.
Pardon?
Betsy.
Yeah, we're voting on Betsy first. Anderson?
Yes.
Okay. Gustan.
No.
Clotho.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Susan, may I interject?
Hang on a minute.
I think the most appropriate way to make this vote would be each council member state who they're voting for, instead of saying no, yes, no.
Okay.
I just think that's the most appropriate.
Yeah.
Let's start over, Susan.
Okay.
Roll call.
So, hang on. I'm gonna write this down. Betsy and Tom. Okay. Anderson.
Wolf.
Oh, Betsy. Okay. Gustan.
Um.
Tom, okay. Clotho.
Betsy.
Tom.
Russell.
Betsy.
Okay, oops, Ramsey. No, Russell. Uh, Sayhadashini.
Uh, this is me. I'll vote for Tom Gustan.
Okay, and Betsy.
I'll vote for Betsy.
Betsy votes for Betsy. Okay. So that is four for Betsy, three for Tom.
Betsy is our new chairman.
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations, Betsy.
Congratulations.
Nomination is now open for vice chairman.
I nominate Pat Russell, please.
This is Betsy, and I'd like to second Pat Russell for vice chair.
Chair. Pat Russell. Motion by Kathleen, seconded by Betsy.
Do we have any other nominations for vice chairman?
I move we close nominations.
Second. Can't hear nobody.
It's been moved and seconded. The nominations are now closed.
Who's seconded?
Anderson.
Anderson.
Pete.
Okay. With no other body, I'll just do a roll call quick.
Do it.
Anderson.
Pat.
Gustan.
Pat.
Clotho.
Pat.
Ramsey.
I was off. I was off. Who's the nominations again?
Pat.
Yeah, Pat, yep.
Russell.
Yeah.
Sayhadashini.
Pat, Russell.
And Wolf.
Pat.
Okay.
Brett is our new vice chair. Congratulations, Pat.
Congratulations, Pat.
Right, Pat. Okay, and this is an opportunity too for us to trade liaison assignments. And I have here that Steve would like to do tax abatement, and he's trading that with Kathleen. She was gonna do police. Is this correct?
No, that's not correct. That, I'm doing fire.
Fire. That's what I wanted to think. Fire, not police. And, uh, Kathleen is turning over the utility service board to Pat and taking on the ordinance review board. Is that true?
Yes.
Great.
Plus, I'm taking Pat's historical preservation committee.
Right. That's for sure, right?
Yeah.
Okey doke. Mark Ramsey. Mark, would you like to give up the park board to Betsy? I guess you would like to do that. Possibly you would like to do 911, uh, do the 911 central dispatch.
I think that, Betsy, did you change your mind?
Yeah, I'm fine with just keeping my assignments that I have. If that's okay.
Okay, we'll just leave it like that then. Uh, Pat, that means you'll take...
Wait, I need to go back. We need to go back. I'm keeping tax abatement. Steve's taking Pat's 911.
I got you. Okay. Steve's got the 911.
Yeah. And I'm keeping the tax abatement.
Okey doke. That's all we need to know. We got that. And then, Pat is taking on the utility board and planning and zoning. Are you still gonna do that, Pat?
Yes.
I know you've got a lot on your plate, but...
Are we zoning too, or is it just planning commission?
Just the planning commission.
Right.
And she's got Civic Center as well.
I've got the Civic Center Advisory Committee.
Yeah, she has Advisory Committee. Pete Sayhadashini has Civic Center, so...
Right.
You know, I'm just gonna keep mine from last year, so I'm...
Okay, so we've got it all settled then, all the letters.
Do you? Uh, Tom, do you wanna keep Makita, or can I have that?
What's that?
Do you wanna keep Makita, or can I have that?
Anderson.
I don't have it.
Anderson.
Yes, I did have it. They asked me to fill in, and I did.
Okay, I'd like to be on Makita, the Makita liaison.
You got it, kid.
Thank you.
Well, mark that down. Yeah, you said you'd like to do that, and that'll work great. You'll really like working with those folks, Eric.
Yeah, I guess.
Do we have any other changes? Is that okay with everyone?
Tom, are you gonna send me a final copy of...
Yes, I will.
...clear cut what the changes are?
Susan, I'll take care of that for you, okay?
Thank you, like you did last year. Appreciate it.
You betcha. We'll do it.
Hey, Tom and Betsy, I wanna thank you guys for leading us this past year.
More than welcome. Get a prayer.
It was a good year. It was a good year, guys.
Elizabeth, is it okay with you if I go ahead with this?
Sure.
Okay, I've got it all laid out here from the mayor. Um, do we have any liaison communications from any one of you?
I do.
Okay, Pat.
Well, we got the aviation board meeting. We convened by Zoom with a quorum. The highlights were the financial report, all rents were collected, all accounts were balanced. The manager's report, the airport sold 396 gallons of low-wed aviation fuel. They still haven't sold any jet fuel. The Aeustiana contractors are working on the runway light project. It is almost complete. It is now pilot-controlled, so when they come in at night, they just turn it on. Um, various maintenance projects were taken care of. The engineering report, total cost of electrical rehabilitation phase two of the runway was $340,000 for 130, and it was 100% covered by FAA funds. The new business, discussion of a new board member requirement. They live in the county and the Republican and understand aviation requirements. There was a discussion for a new engineering firm, and they ended with continuing second Tuesday for meetings. And just to give you a highlight of the Civic Center Committee, Advisory Committee, we met on December 19th at 9:00 at the Civic Center, and we are going to meet again on the 16th at 9:00 at the Civic Center. So, um, we met to turn the ground, assess the property, and then discuss our opinions about the condition of the house of property. We're all surprised at the inexpensive of the floors. Um, we have ideas about what we can use them for. We continued our discussion about hiring a genetic coordinator. We could not come to a conclusion at that time. We discussed the expenses of operating the Civic Center, the opportunities of how to use the Civic Center, and the best direction to go. I am working on a Civic Center committee whose article the past, so that's business that we are doing, and how the Civic Center will proceed.
Thanks, Pat. Tom here. Pat, did you add Kent and Julie Worland to your list of folks that wanted to help out?
Yes, I did.
Good girl. Thank you. Thank you.
Pat, did you get a copy of the inventory?
Not yet. I have not.
Okay, I'll have to try to find out what he did with it. He was gonna send you a copy the day that he got sick, and so I will find out what he did with that inventory list I gave him and get you a copy.
I appreciate that. Yeah, thank you. All right.
Thanks, Pat. Tom here. Do we have any other liaison announcements or information? If not, we'll move along. Unfinished business, none. New business. City of Peru Common Council Resolution 2021. Susan.
Resolution to amend second resolution 13, 2020, resolution establishing rate tracking for the municipal electric utility of the city of Peru, Indiana to resolution number 17. I inadvertently doubled, well, duplicated the number 13 for the rate tracker, and so we need to change this second 13 to 17. That's all we gotta do is change the number on the resolution.
So this is what we voted on at the last meeting? It was just a clerical error?
Correct.
Correct. Yes. So, Dustin, do we consider and adopt this, or can we just go right into adoption?
Might as well just consider adopting. Oh, it's a resolution, actually. I just adopted. Sorry. It's not an ordinance. No need to consider.
Okay. I move we adopt resolution 1, 2021. Tom.
Seconded by Steve.
Okay.
Been moved and seconded. Roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Gustan.
Yes.
Clotho.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Uh, this is me. I'll vote for Tom Gustan.
Okay, and Betsy.
I'll vote for Betsy.
Betsy votes for Betsy. Okay. So that is four for Betsy, three for Tom.
Betsy is our new chairman.
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations, Betsy.
Congratulations.
Nomination is now open for vice chairman.
I nominate, uh, Pat Russell, please.
This is Betsy, and I'd like to second Pat Russell for vice chair.
Chair. Pat Russell.
Motion by Kathleen, seconded by Betsy.
Motion by Kathleen, seconded by Betsy.
Do we have any other nominations for vice chairman?
I move we close nominations.
Second. Can't hear nobody.
It's been moved and seconded. The nominations are now closed.
Who's seconded?
Anderson.
Anderson.
Pete.
Okay. With no other body, I'll just do a roll call quick.
Do it.
Anderson.
Pat.
Gustan.
Pat.
Clotho.
Pat.
Ramsey.
Tom.
Russell.
Yes.
Sayhadashini.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, do we have any other communications?
Yes, I've got something. So...
Who is this?
This is Kathleen. This is Kathleen. Sorry. So, for the CARES Act money, Susan, thank you for emailing that to us. For the CARES Act money, we got $353,767.
We didn't get it? That's... No, that's not what we got. That's our limit for reimbursement to put in, ask for. We didn't get that money.
Sorry, how much was that again? What is our limit?
Pardon?
353,767.
Okay, thank you, Kathleen.
Okay, I understand. That's just semantics. That's our limit. So it wasn't actually received. So, the receipts add up to 263,155. The left dollar amounts $90,612.
It's a reimbursement. They had to pay for it, bring me the invoice, then I had to request reimbursement for that invoice.
I understand that.
Well, if they didn't pay it and didn't have the invoice, we can't ask for it to be reimbursed for something we didn't spend for.
Kathleen is trying to say...
Excuse me. Sorry.
Why didn't we use more? Why didn't we use the full amount, I think is what she's trying to say. Why didn't we use all that we put out?
We had to spend it to ask for reimbursement.
Right. Or should they have paid for things to spend it on? Was there nothing else that we needed?
I think, this is Pat, I think each department received a certain amount.
No.
No?
No. Each department was notified that we were eligible for reimbursement, and when they spent something COVID-related, they were to bring me the invoice so I could submit it to get reimbursed for that cost that we paid out. That was the sum total of all the invoices that was brought, that was spent for the COVID.
I understood that from the aviation board, they were allowed to spend $30,000.
No, that's different. The aviation board was different. We're talking about COVID fund. You're talking about their COVID grant. That's different, Pat.
Okay, so they did totally different.
Totally different, right.
Okay, so it's just like on March 13th, you turned in, or Lori did, or a computer. So, and I understand that we can go from March 1st to December 31st. How was that computer COVID-related?
What computer? What are you talking about?
It's the first name. It's the purchase made on 3/13/20.
Yeah, it was... We were backdated to be able to submit. There was a time limit.
Right. I understand that.
We could go back to the first of the year.
It's March 1st, actually, is what I understood. But how was that COVID-related, and could you have done that again?
It was a computer bought to go home to work remotely.
Okay, great. That's what I thought it was. So, there was $90,000 available.
As what?
To backstop. $90,000 more that could have been used.
We did not have the invoices turned in for the reimbursement, Kathleen.
I understand that, Susan. What I'm saying is, why couldn't somebody in City Hall have used that full amount?
They tried.
See, this is the problem. The problem is...
They sent in every invoice they could think of. They've gotten chairs, they got desks, they've got all the COVID-related. Station 2 is in there.
Could we have redone the city council chairs, just like the fire department did?
Do what?
They could have redone all for a year in here, I suppose. I don't know. Right, and I think that's where we would have benefited from having a COVID committee or like the COVID task force, and we didn't have one. Kathleen begged for months at the start of COVID to have something like that, and you and the mayor wanted to go it alone. And I think if we would have had a task force, maybe we could have figured out other ways that we could have used the money.
There's not other ways you can use the money. It has to be COVID.
We could have been watching chairs in the council.
That didn't come chart. They didn't loosen that restriction up till later on. There was a lot of restrictions at first that didn't come into play till later. As the program went on, they would send us memos stating we could now submit for this, or we could now submit for that, as they loosened the restrictions towards the later on end of the program.
Susan, I understand that. As I said, I communicated with our regional CARES Act person, and I understood that months ago. And I tried, I really tried to help, but it was ignored. So, anyway, that's just my concern. I wish we would have been able to take advantage of all of that.
Dustin, I don't know if Miles will be up to let him in, but we can try it. Miles would lay down.
I understand.
Maybe, maybe we should table this to next month, when Josh is available and Miles is available.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, probably a good idea.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded. We table this for next month. Roll call.
See, Betsy motion, Kathleen second. Anderson?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Clotho?
Yes.
Ramsey? Russell?
Yes.
Sayad Ashini?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, do we have any other communications?
Yes, I've got something, so...
Who is this?
This is Kathleen, this is Kathleen, sorry. So, for the CARES Act money, Susan, thank you for emailing that to us. For the CARES Act money, uh, we got three hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
We didn't get, that's, no, that's not what we got. That's our limit for reimbursement to put in, ask for. We didn't get that money.
Sorry, how much was that again? What is our limit?
Pardon?
Three, three fifty-three, seven six seven.
Okay, thank you, Kathleen.
Okay, I understand, that's just semantics. That's our limit. So it wasn't actually received. So, the receipts add up to two hundred and sixty-three thousand, one fifty-five. The leftover amounts, ninety thousand dollars, six hundred twelve, ninety thousand, six hundred twelve dollars. Is there, why wasn't the, the full amount used?
It's a reimbursement. They had to pay for it, bring me the invoice, then I had to request reimbursement for that invoice.
I, I understand that.
Well, if they didn't pay it and didn't have the invoice, we can't ask for it to be reimbursed for something we didn't spend for.
Kathy is trying to say... Why didn't we use more? Why didn't we use the full amount, I think is what she's trying to say. Why didn't we use all that we could have?
We had to spend it to ask for reimbursement.
Where did they have to spend it on? What, was there nothing else that we needed?
I think, this is Pat, I think each department received a certain amount.
No.
No?
No. Each department was notified that we were eligible for reimbursement. And when they spent something COVID-related, they were to bring me the invoice so I could submit it to get reimbursed for that cost that we paid out. That was the sum total of all the invoices that was brought, that was spent for the COVID.
I understood that from the aviation board, we are allowed to spend thirty thousand.
No, that's different. The aviation board was different. We're talking about COVID fund. You're talking about their COVID grant. That's different, Pat.
Okay, so they did totally different, okay.
Totally different, right.
Okay, so, it's just like on March thirteenth, you turned in, uh, or Lori did, or a computer. So, and I understand that we can go from March first to December thirty-first. How was that computer COVID-related?
What computer? What are you talking about?
It's the first name, it's the purchase made on three thirteen, the twenty.
Yeah, it was, we were backdated to be able to submit. There was a time limit.
Right. I understand that.
We could go back to the first of the year.
Uh, it's, it's March first, actually, is what I understood. But, um, how was that COVID-related, and could you have done that again?
It was a computer bought to go home to work remotely.
Okay, great, that's what I thought it was. So, there was ninety thousand dollars available.
With what?
To backstop. Ninety thousand dollars more that could have been used.
We did not have the invoices turned in for the reimbursement, Kathleen.
I understand that, Susan. What I'm saying is, why couldn't somebody in city halls could have used that full amount?
They tried.
See, this is the problem.
They, they sent in every invoice they could think of. They've gotten chairs, they got desks, they've got all the COVID-related. Station two is in there.
Could we have redone the city council chairs, just like the fire department did?
Do what? They could have redone all for each year in here, I suppose. I don't know.
Right, and I think that's where we would have benefited from having a COVID, uh, committee, or like the COVID task force. And we didn't have one. Kathleen begged for a month at the start of COVID to have something like that. And you and the mayor wanted to go it alone. And I think if we would have had a task force, maybe we could have figured out, uh, other ways that we could have used this money.
There's not other ways you can use the money, it has to be COVID.
We could have been watchable chairs in the council. Watchable chairs in the council.
They didn't come to, they didn't loosen that restriction up till later on. There was a lot of restrictions at first that didn't come into play till later. As the program went on, they would send us memos stating we could now submit for this, or we could now submit for that, as they loosened the restrictions towards the later on end of the program.
Susan, I understand that. As I said, I communicated with, uh, our regional CARES Act person, and I understood that months ago. And I tried, I really tried to help, help, but was ignored, so... And you, that's just, that's just my concern. I wish we would have been able to, to take advantage of all of it.
Do we have any other comments?
Uh, I do, I, I'm concerned, were you done with that, Kathleen?
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Okay, okay. Uh, I'm concerned about, uh, in my Board of Works packet this week, I see that we have two firefighters that are leaving. And that concerns me. And then I also saw that we have another police officer that, uh, recently left Samantha, uh, Raver. And I'm just so sad to hear that we're continuing to lose police officers and that we've lost a couple firefighters. And in one of their resignations, they cited that they have lost, uh, I forget exactly how it put it, it was Garrett Keel, but he had lost, like, hope in, in the city officials. And I just think that, are we, we've had a problem with the police department leaving, are we getting into a problem where the fire department's leaving now? After those comments that Mile made, Miles made about the fire department? And what do we need to do to be more proactive so that we're not losing these good city employees?
It's something we gotta work on, isn't it?
It's a hundred percent something we gotta work on. I'm concerned, and I think it's gonna cost, not only, I mean, they're so valuable to the community, but also it's gonna cost us, I mean, a ton of money too. So we need to treat these employees right. We need to not call them lazy at a city council meeting. We need to respect the jobs that they do, both police and firefighters. And I, I would recommend that we have a committee, uh, maybe that works to see what we can do to try to retain these employees.
Make that a motion, Betsy. Make that a motion.
Before you do that, I want to tell you something. I've been watching what WABE has been doing, and it's fabulous. They've been, I don't know if it's called renting or leasing, billboards thanking their policemen for their work. I think that is fabulous, and it's something we need to think about too.
And firefighters as well.
Too, yep, yep.
There's probably some, there's probably some program where you can even, you know, get those billboards for free during down months to use for promotions like that, so I agree.
I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make the motion, uh, I'm gonna make the motion, this is Kathleen, to former committee, just as Betsy said, to help, um, do what we can, look into what we can to support and be advocate for our policemen and firemen. That's my motion, Mr. Former Committee, to advocate for policemen and firemen, see what we can do to help.
I'll second that. Kathleen, would you wanna be in charge of that?
I'd take that up, yes.
Well, we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Clotho?
Yes.
Ramsey? Still not here. Russell?
Yes.
Sayad Ashini?
Yes.
And Wolf?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any, do we have any other comments?
Yes, this is Pat.
Pat?
We were also discussing, um, setting up a committee to work with the, uh, the city and the department heads on the, um, budget. So...
That's needed, that's necessary.
So we need to think about that. I'm not gonna propose it this time. But this is something we should think about, so that when it comes time to do the budget, we are ready to help Susan and Miles negotiate with the department heads to make good decisions.
I think that's a great idea.
Hey, Pat? Any other comments?
Are we still on communications, Tom?
Uh, you're...
We're on this topic, uh, Pat's topic.
I just wanted to make a comment.
Yeah, I think we ought to do that around March, because they'll start getting at some negotiations in the early summer.
Like July.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, 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 do we have any other comments on that? Okay, uh, I would entertain a motion to adjourn, so Betsy can get to her game.
All right, thank you. Second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call.
Who's second?
That was Betsy.
Sorry.
Okay.
Have fun, Betsy, it's a game.
Thank you.
You're going to win.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.